This conference will now be recorded.
I'm sorry, Sam. Good evening, everybody. Tonight is the Board of Trustees March 18, 5 o'clock meeting. Dave, if we can do the call to order, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Jennings?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Simple call here. And then we'll stand for the plug of allegiance. United States of America, which is a republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening? Nothing here? Great. Hearing of the public, do we have anybody other than Tara? Congratulations, by the way. Nothing on that. Well, let's dive right in. Speaking of Tara, we're going to the presentation of this Distinguished Citizen Award this evening. Hi, Oliver.
I'm Dr. Dean Trustee, just called. If you'd be welcome, if you'd like to. The submitted background, the Distinguished Citizen Service Award was established by Selene Township in 2021 to recognize deserving citizens who've made significant contributions to the Selene community. The award is intended to shine a light on high-impact volunteers who've given themselves for the betterment of the community. Following the thoughtful process, the selection committee and township are pleased to present 2025 Distinguished Citizen Service Award to Tara Day. Tara serves as the president of the Australian Hand, Illinois Street Teachers Association of Selene. For she has worked as a private lead for the inclusive and accessible playground initiative. This impactful project will break around this summer and go further than mission to develop an inclusive and accessible outdoor playground that allows both physically developed and children, and children with special needs, to play on sex run. Be difficult to grasp physical accessibility, especially sensory, social, emotional, and cognitive accessibility. As a mother of child with complex medical needs, Tara can see first chance the need for the project and its ability to improve the educational experience for approximately 13% of Selene students with special needs, in addition to improvement for the entire community. Before coordinating the project, Tara worked as an executive with Ollie, for she was responsible for sales and team with $18,000 while managing, coaching, and developing a team of over 50 employees. This experience has certainly been demonstrated in the organization and effectiveness of the initiative. At this time, the overwhelming majority of the fundraising goal of $650,000 has been met through numerous fundraising and grant activities. The project will move forward with extensive community support and represents a significant moment for the Selene community. It's our pleasure to present the 2025 Distinguished Citizen Service Award to Tara, and we have the board present. Congratulations.
Well deserved, yeah. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Shall we see that down there?
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Probably because you're probably on your douches of change. Thank you very much. That's great. That's great to hear you guys. All right.
Thank you.
You got it. Great bunch. Thanks for coming. Have a great evening. So love it, sir. All right. Big D, come on down.
Hi. I have one resolution for the board this evening. This is 25-044. Point member to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Tim Schlocker is moving to Springfield Township, so he needs to resign his position at the BCA. Next month will be his last meeting. And our alternate board member, Tommy Malik, has expressed an interest in being appointed to finish out Tim Schlocker.
Question on that. I talked to Jason Levine about this. Do you think, I know it was brought up in the meeting, do you think maybe two alternates? Or do you just want to keep going with the one alternate?
After this decided tonight, I was going to talk to Jason and Yuri Osterholt and Chair of the BCA.
Okay.
If they definitely want to go to do the little add.
Sure. I'd give you something to compare the two, if that were the case in the future instead of, not nothing against Mr. Malik. I, you know, but I just, a thought is off, is what they brought up. So, okay. Any questions by the board? I'll offer Resolution 25044 to appoint Mr. Malik as the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'll second.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Tara. Appreciate it. Just, hey, Bridges, just one second on your way up. Did the board have any questions on the regular minutes from February 18 of 2025? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thanks.
Didn't you abstain or weren't you?
Oh, I wasn't there. You're right. I was on vacation.
Oh.
I'll abstain.
Okay. Sorry. You made the motion, but I think, I think you're.
I can still make the motion. I just said, yeah.
Good catch, Jeff.
Thank you. Caught me off guard there. Sorry.
You did well.
What's that?
I mean, you did well, Tom. Well, good evening. I have a couple items on the agenda. Resolution 25043. This is authorization to award a bid entering a contract for the 2024 Selene Township W C Phase Two Road Project. This is the Corey Road project. The project itself to the best possible bidder, which was Gurkin.
Stop right there. I'll make a motion to approve Corey Road. John, are you going to second this one? I'll make a motion 25043 to approve Phase Two of the OW, OW, OPWC.
Second. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Thank heavens, yes.
Okay, Resolution 25045. This authorizes administrator to enter into a memorandum of understanding with county engineer for roundabout maintenance for the future roundabout at Bancroft and Centennial Road.
Any questions?
We have one on Brent Road Roundabout, and this would be an official.
So we're mowing, we whack, whatever we're going to do, chemicals, whatever.
Yes, the road department with its new hires intend on performing the maintenance of basically cutting the gravel leading the area instead of contracting. Last year, we contracted the initial phase of MOU for Brent Road out. This contract is going to affect, is staying in effect until September 28th.
I'll offer Resolution 24045, a memorandum of understanding with county engineer for roundabout maintenance.
I'll second.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Next resolution is 25-48. This is authorization to advertise for hire for utility worker. This would be a replacement for the internal posting we have right now for the assistant form that's approved earlier this year. So currently, we're advertising for hire for a utility worker that was already pre-approved to increase the strength to one. It makes common sense and financial sense to be able to do both of these at the same time. So as we're interviewing, going through the process and advertising, spending the money, we can take it from that pool to individuals instead of just the one.
Questions? How's the search going for the manager?
I think we have a conclusion that we're probably going to present to you at the next quarter.
Okay. I thought you had somebody in mind already, so.
Yes.
Okay. Good question. I'll offer Resolution 25048, hire a utility worker?
Second. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Last resolution, 25049. This is to approve the plan and advertise for bid for the 2025 Selene Township OPWC Road Improvement Project. This project includes Holt Road, Brookside subdivision, Mid-John, and Tantara Roads and some other township roads. Sure, the project, the plan, the plan is to know what we do.
How extensive is the Holt Road project? Are they going to widen it to two lanes or?
It will be very similar, almost identical to the front half of the 16-foot wide pavement, but two-foot burned on each side. Will be removing and filling in, tidling in the ditch along the west side of Holt Road, which goes out to Brent. Some extensive drainage work along Holt Road and a, an extension of the drainage coming out of the private development of the whole thing will go out to temper concrete to help bring that, so it'll be a larger amount of drains and catch cases put in place to help drain that private development as well. It's a fairly extensive project, one of the largest projects financially we've ever conducted in the township. And we did sit down with the financial department and make sure at the long term that it was something that is financially feasible. Should be good.
Some nice houses out there.
Yeah.
I'm sure they're going to appreciate it. I'll offer, I'll offer Resolution 25049 to approve plan and advertise for bids for the OWP, OPWC Road Improvement Project.
I'll second.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Chris, come on down.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Got three resolutions. The first two are similar in nature, just different pieces of equipment. Resolution 25046 is the resolution to donate obsolete emergency medical service equipment. It's two pieces, it's called his old rescue pump for CPR, so longer in our protocol. These are devices that were with the EMS transition back in August. They're taken out of our protocol, but they still exist in Jewish townships at this time. So we have no financial interest in them there, plus two grand each, so still gonna donate those to Jerusalem.
I have a question. With both that and the one that you're about to talk about, why would we not want to combine the money that you could get from both and maybe purchase a piece of equipment or something for Selene Township Department?
I'm not certain we would be able to sell them.
Okay.
I mean, they're huge devices. They've been in use for eight years, so.
Okay.
You know, they're not, does not hold a lot of cash value to them, and in particular, this one, it's got to be protocol specific. So it's going to narrow the pool of applicants that would even apply for. We put them on top deals, we're gonna probably not get as much back as we put in in man hours.
Good question. Any other questions from the board? I'll offer Resolution 25046 to donate obsolete emergency medical equipment.
Second. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
The next one, according to 25047, again, to the resolution to donate obsolete emergency medical service equipment. These are auto-letting vehicles, transport generators. Again, they have a service product, you can't even buy them or get them repaired anymore. We've replaced all of our units from late last year and put in service early this year with the latest and greatest technology. We hope you like fun. So when you get those rolled out, we've got these four that are no use to us, but Springfield is in the process of looking to replace theirs. And they got these auto-lets currently in service, again, donating equipment from the town. And they're just looking to band-aid themselves through and get ready to determine what they're gonna produce.
Questions? I'll offer Resolution 25047, donating obsolete medical equipment?
I'll second.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
And the last resolution is 25051. That's a resolution to authorize the hiring of a budget coordinator to where Jennifer Howard was hired. Restructure the administrative staff in fire depression to add a budget coordinator that would be able to straighten the path.
I do have some questions about that also.
Okay, I'm remembering, she's been, because she's probably been.
Okay.
Best suited to answer those questions.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hi, Jeff.
They're not tough questions. I looked at the salary range for that. I also looked at the qualifications in terms of education, and I don't see those matching. As I recall, it's high school diploma or equivalent is minimum. Desired is an associate's degree in accounting. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I am not an accountant, so I have no idea what accountants make. But it looked like the salary for the educational requirement was a little high in my estimation. So can you clarify?
So I did work with Oliver and you look on the creation of that, and we did use Employer Association as a reference. I don't know if Oliver would like to comment further on that, but that's the information I have.
Cast potato.
Kind of sorry I asked right now.
No, that's, that's something that we certainly considered. I think the way the position was previously structured, it certainly dealt with a fair number of budgetary issues. There were also some hiring and personnel-related matters. So by using that as a metric, the restructured position would be at a lesser rate than the administrative service coordinator. In terms of the marketplace, I think that was kind of our anticipation that salary range may draw somebody with the minimum expectations, but could also bring in somebody who maybe has some public sector experience, has some fire service experience that could hit the ground running in terms of understanding the equipment that they're purchasing. And then we also consider internal metrics. So with it being a new position, how would this compare to other positions, similar positions? Hourly grades, we'd be here attached all four of the positions in the police department with our clerical unit. Those were all different considerations, but certainly I think it's a point well taken in terms of is the salary range reflective of the minimum expectation? And I can see where that's a valid question. I think on top of the minimum expectations, it's also, can we establish a larger pool to bring in part of, I brought a member back.
I guess I'm more concerned with, excuse me, the minimum requirements than I am the salary. But again, I don't, I mean, I've read the job description. I'm wondering, from an accounting standpoint, if someone with a just a high school education could meet all those responsibilities.
Yeah, I think it would need to be, on top of the high school education, they would certainly need to demonstrate some experience. So the expectation is that whoever comes into the position will have some basic understanding of the budget principles, budget development cycles, and the purchase order process. So being able to establish requisitions, process, purchase orders. So just starting out with whole me, high school education, I think it would be hard to ask for an exceptional position, really hit the ground running. But I think the hope is that maybe somebody with the applied experience and the demonstrated ability through their current employer. And if it's through a public employer, that would be one additional consideration, but that experience would be key. We could certainly take a look at updating the minimum requirements too. That way it's more in line with each other.
I think a lot of bookkeepers only have a high school degree and, you know, they're, they can make well above that as well, you know. So I think that's probably more the candidate we're looking for, somewhat bookkeeping experience and some finance, so. Any further questions? I'll offer Resolution 25051 to authorize hiring of a budget coordinator?
Second. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thanks, Chris. Sarah, come on down.
Dr. Dean Trustee, this is all I would just want to call. How are you?
Good.
So tonight I have the manual reports to present for you. Just, we decided to go with a different format, starting in December, something that put it in more of a rap form that quite honestly, I find a bit easier to read and digest. I'll be interested to hear if you guys have any feedback or suggestions for something you think might be more effective. But starting in December, we did that, and hopefully you will find that useful for you as well. Just another thing I want to mention when it comes to my report, our activity in the police department on the news, we have news that Sean Landis, the perpetrator of the double shooting, the attempted murder on Crossfield, was convicted on all counts that he was charged with, and just wanting to acknowledge again publicly the amazing job our responding officers did, the exceptional work our detectives did putting it together. It was quite a long and, you know, windy road that took them all the way to Las Vegas to secure their arrest. So wanted to just mention that and just tell you how proud I am of the work our police officers and detectives and the FBI and BCA and all the agencies that contributed to that did in their work. And actually, do you have any questions of the, of the reports? And I also have a resolution to present, Resolution Number 25-042, which is requesting authorization to enter into a MOU for BCA. When Mary Bell, the administrative secretary who retired a couple of years ago, Chief Long, decided to, instead of hiring the bad, we started to retire Detective Rucker's work in the time since, and we hired Stacy Smothers, who had been with her with veterans, who found that it consolidated just that and applied for the position, that to be hired, comfortable. That kind of evolved into some different things over time. She's doing all of the work the admin secretary did at the time that Mary Bell retired. Plus now with Body Cam, she does our Body Cam, public record request, our Camera One, audio recording, public record request. She is the assistant property manager. She still works the records video. So we thought moving her into a classification that already existed in the contract at a higher rate of pay was more commensurate with the duties she was currently doing. And we did review the job descriptions for all the security staff and personnel, and everyone is in agreement. Nobody wanted, you know, anything different. We agreed that they said it was already in the contract and the case, yeah, it was already in the contract. That's what that MOU is, is just basically, we've all agreed on the terms of it and we've seen the back.
Questions? I'll offer Resolution 25042, enter into M U O, MOU with OP, OPBA, anyways. You're having trouble with your acronym. I have a lot of it here.
I'll second.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thanks, Sarah.
Again, first resolution under, this resolution 2540, authorization to remove a insecure, unsafe, or structurally defective building located at 5167 Estes. This is a residential property that was heavily damaged by a fire in January of 2023. It's been inspected by the fire department, which has been in contact, continued contact with the property owner at the outset of the issue. And L K L engineers inspected this in August of 2024. The entire structure has been deemed by L K L engineers to be unsound and unrepairable. Administration has been working through some other properties. First, that is 899 Brent, 2304 McCord, taking those one property at a time. And now we currently have this in our, if this were to be approved by the trustees, we ultimately have an opportunity for a hearing to address the board. We do have Fire Marshal Hiller here this afternoon to answer any specific questions that the board may have. I know the department has had some extended discussions with the property owner, and that has fallen off after a period of time. And then our legal counsel has also been involved in the discussions.
Where did it last stand? What was the last communication we had with the owner?
The last communication's probably been eight months ago now. We've, we reached out with Cooper. She went ahead and I asked her for a plan of action. Gave her till, I believe, March 1st of last year to do that. She has failed to do that. And since then, she has taken out restraining orders against the township to not tear the building down, which according to the legal counsel, now gone by the wayside and no longer valid. So she has quit all communications with us, so we basically are at the point where the structure hasn't been taken care of enough, enough since the fire was in January.
And does she still live in town or?
Which is North Carolina, to the best of my knowledge.
Okay. And was there a divorce involved or what?
I believe that there was.
Okay.
We didn't get too much of that. That's just the story that we got from her.
Yeah.
I don't do any digging as far as that goes.
Yeah.
But she, she made that very clear. I do have all emails that you guys can see my pictures.
I think she included us in on some of the earlier ones, but I haven't seen anything on it in a while.
Yeah, so there's been no communication back and forth, basically, since the restraining order came out. Since that time, we have not had any contact with her. She did not reach back out to us to let us know a plan of action, so this is, this is our course we're going for, this is what we're asking for.
Questions besides that? I'll offer Resolution 25040 to remove and secure unsafe or structurally defective building at 5167 Estes Avenue.
I'll second.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
I'm gonna abstain. Let's see, Jay abstain. And Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Next resolution is Resolution 2541, authorizing a Roth 457 option for team members. Presented in the packet for trustee consideration is the option reason and additional information about this option from Ohio Department of Construction. So this was researched based on feedback received from this one team member. The township already has the traditional crew tax option. This would be approved if we had the post-tax option. There's no cost to the township, probably no time to insert the backstop.
Questions? I'll offer Resolution 25041, authorizing a Roth 457.
I'll second.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And the last item is Resolution 2550, to accept a three-line petition, set the date for a hearing. Petition that's impolites for village twelve lights, plus 59 through 76. The hearing would be on April 15th at five AM.
Questions? I'll offer Resolution 25050, hearing of street lighting petition.
Second. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Thanks, Oliver. Thanks, Almer.
I just had two quick resolutions. Resolution 25-039, it's a transfer of funds, and when we get our tax settlements, we come to the various departments. And then according with our budgetary, we put particular funds into capital improvement projects. And that's where funds to the departments write the checks from. So that they just, I guess, Frank's going to set up, so they just didn't have access to the whole budget and then spend it all. There's a certain amount that goes to capital improvements and draw from that account. I'd ask you to pass that.
Questions, anybody? I'll offer resolution 25039, transfer of funds.
I'll second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Jenaway?
Yes.
Ms. Mullen?
Yes.
And, um, this is to establish an expense, expense account, uh, for election expenses. And it's nine hundred and forty-one dollars, thirty-nine cents, all matter.
What do we have as an election expense?
Isn't Levy?
Levy? Or the senior's honor or?
Fire levy. Isn't fire, fire levy?
That was from the fire where they lost the law.
Oh.
And they were willing to typically understand to build a general fund this year to build the fire fund. Like all that.
Questions besides that one? I'll offer resolution 25049 to establish new expense account.
I'll second.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Jenaway?
Yes.
Ms. Mullen?
Yes.
That's all I have.
We're in a hearing of the public. Don't see anybody here. All right. Any open discussion and reports? We've got a couple, a couple of things on that, Almer, if you want to chat about.
Uh, yes, and the first item is the higher division of liquor control, uh, the applications for LTC services. So fire department has no objections. The police department is waiting on one more piece of information. There is no objections upon the property. With this being a new application, they do more additional due diligence on the owner. So this is the last meeting for the due date of March thirty-first. So this time, we don't anticipate, but if there are, that's certainly update taxes on them. Uh, but these are two big way of national support. And the next item is the annual report for 2024. So the trustee, uh, review and uses the 2024 report as well as the snapshot. I'll allow time to send them. Part of that for, um, as well as seeing where to sort of report to you.
Looks great, by the way, Sam. Yeah, did a great job. Okay, thanks, Al. All right, at this time, I'd like to go to executive session at five thirty-three to discuss pending or imminent court action, the elected officials, administrator, legal counsel, police chief. Kevin Moore, happy. Absolutely.
Second.
Real quick, are we, we may be taking action if anybody, for what, what that's worth, so.
You got Johnson?
Yes.
Jenaway?
Yes.
Ms. Mullen?
Yes.
Have a good night. The rest of you. Stand, ma'am.
This conference will now be recorded.
Uh, I'd like to come out executive section at six fifteen.
Second. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Jenaway?
Yes.
Ms. Mullen?
Yes.
We're not taking any action. I, uh, I'll adjourn at six fifteen.
Second. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Jenaway?
Yes.
Ms. Mullen?
Yes.
All right, thanks.